Does the record replay, the original being with all members present? Robert Downhill complimenting his excuse. He was called off to the left coast. And we will have him sit back. But yes, please. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the highest law.
I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 11th, 2013.
A motion, second.
As we were discussing executive, roll ball vote, please.
Mr. Sukamoto, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ramigan?
Yes.
Mr. Montalvo?
Yes.
Mr. Vol.
Yes.
Well, I apologize for the slight delay as we came down to the executive. It was a busy agenda, but we got through everything. I compliment the council for staying on task. Just a couple of notes before I come down below. Our hearts, our prayers, our thoughts, certainly with the city of Boston, the neighboring towns, as terrorism once again hit us and whether it's in our backyard or anywhere, anywhere in the world, we feel it. And so suddenly, we orbit the residents of Massachusetts. We get through this and also want to commend...
A great example of law enforcement, cooperation, and also citizens' cooperation in staying inside, sharing photos, working together to bring a swift end to the fears that were going up, going on in Boston. Transitioning for that. Reminder that this Wednesday, in the council chambers right here, we are hosting the county freeholders. The formal meeting will begin at 8:00 PM, and the council members will be meeting with the freeholders prior to that. Also, I want to note that Bob Landrigan and I, along with Ray Cody and Peg Cody, we went down to Union Beach and met with three resident camps presenting an opportunity for a summer camp to the children of Union Beach. You can imagine, as the number of homes that were destroyed in Union Beach, and now we have multi-generations living within these homes, that opportunity for these children to get out for a week or two in the summertime to enjoy camp would be tremendous. And as we presented it, you could tell the people that attended, there was probably thirty different families there, that the idea of sending their children to camp was a very foreign idea, and they were very reluctant. But as they walked out, you could see the excitement and that they understood the value. And I want to commend Peg Cody for chairing this effort. And then we just received note that we have, will be a $15,000 grant from the, this is through the community foundation, but it's actually the Thien Foundation, to support this campership program. And through Bob Landrigan's effort, another $15,000 to help re-equip their ambulance squad. So, and you can probably add more in your report, Bob, when it gets to you, but thank you for your effort on that. Now, I'm gonna move down below and make some proclamations and share some more. Get that ready.
Yep.
Okay, we have a special occasion here. We celebrated last night, and with special occasion, celebrations tend to go overnight a little bit longer. And so we are recognizing Rotary Club on its 90th anniversary. And first, I'd like to invite Assemblywoman Mylee Jacy to come up and join. Okay, actually, before I hand it off, Rotary President Carmella Muller, please come on up. And if you don't mind, the Rotary members that are on our council, you can come and join us. And the Rotarians in the audience, please stand.
Thank you so much, Mayor. First of all, it's wonderful to be back in Madison. Every time I come here, I just am amazed at this building. It's beautiful. You are so fortunate, and I love visiting it, I really do. So it gives me great pleasure this evening to recognize the Rotary upon its 90th anniversary on behalf of Senator Cody, Assemblyman McKeon, and myself, and the entire legislature. And I will not read the whole proclamation. I wouldn't do that to you, but I would like to just pull out a couple of sentences that I think really capture the essence of this occasion. "The Senate and the General Assembly are pleased to honor and salute the Rotary Club of Madison, which has been serving its community with exemplary dedication and steadfast commitment for 90 years. As mentioned, this occasion was recognized last night, and the celebration continues to this evening. The strength and success of the state of New Jersey, the vitality of our communities, and the effectiveness of our American society depend in great measure upon citizens exemplified by the members of the Rotary Club of Madison, who unite voluntarily, act together, and provide their unique talents to further a cause, to perform a necessary service, to support one another and their communities, or to relieve others from unavoidable hardship." This is the essence of community. And therefore, we would like to recognize your accomplishments, celebrate them, and commend you upon this anniversary. And I would like to present this to your Rotary President, Carmella Muller, and all of you who serve in the Rotary so ably. We thank you for that, and we never, ever take it for granted.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I just, before I read the proclamation, I want to, just a few comments. As you, as we recognize Rotary, it is incredible 90 years, and you can see Rotary's touch throughout town, and I'm only gonna touch on a few of it. The Rotary Clock, or not the Rotary Clock, but the Clock on Waverly Place, which was done through Cooperation Rotary. The playground at Dodge Field. Library landscaping, that's a multi-times a year that Rotarians head down to the library to keep it weed-free and so on. The senior gardens and paths at the Reckford Tucker Apartments. And then, which is just a, those are just the tip of the iceberg, but the supporter of local charities, including sponsoring a Little League team for almost 60 years, was noted on the, at the parade on Saturday. And the number I heard last night, $1.5 million of charitable giving right back to the community through Rotary's work. And then, there's what I call the Rotary Ripple Effect. You saw as the Rotarians were standing, you saw the council members right up here standing. And if you look at boards, committees, whether it's on nonprofits or the borough, it's filled with Rotarians giving service above self. They join Rotary because they want to give back, and they don't just show up once a week for a breakfast or dinner, or breakfast or lunch, they are giving back to the community on a daily basis. That's what Rotary is all about. And then Rotary leadership, just to point out, we saw another council member standing in the back there, Neil Coviallo is a past council member, and if I listed all of them, but I want to recognize, the last three mayors have been Rotarians. Myself, Mayor Holden, Mayor Kirkus Lager, and one of the great legends in Madison, the late Sam Gordon, Rotarian. That's just part of what Rotary does. So, I did read this last night, so maybe I'll, I'll skip the Rotary International parts and just hit the whereases that talk about the local part. But just to note that Rotary is an international organization, and they have been leading the fight against polio. So, whereas, chartered on May 24th, 1923, the Rotary Club of Madison is an organization of professional people and community leaders who are involved in Rotary International programs, as well as many programs benefiting the community directly, such as collecting and donating food to Interfaith Food Pantry, the cleanup and beautification for Madison's May Day. And whereas, a Madison Rotary recognizes and sponsors Columbia Independence Day Picnic, as well as participating in major fundraisers, such as sponsoring the Taste of Madison and the Rotary Family Festival. And whereas, a Madison Rotary Club also distributes dictionaries to all third graders in Madison and established the Interact Club, the Rotary Service Club for Madison High Schoolers. Whereas, proceeds raised by Madison Rotary on Shredded Day, Recycled Day, and by selling hot dogs and hamburgers on Battle Hill Day contribute approximately $50,000 annually to local charities and initiatives, as well as for scholarships to Madison High School students. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim May 2013 as Rotary Club of Madison Month, and encourage all citizens to recognize Madison Rotary for making Madison and our world a better place in which to live.
Congratulations.
Just a moment, I don't want to hold up the council meeting, but last night was a really wonderful evening where we celebrated 90 years of recognition for some of our members, longstanding members who were with us, three members, for a total of 163 years of service. That's really quite something. And during those years, we sort of reflected at, as what Rotary has done over the years, not only locally, but internationally and nationally. And I encourage all of you to someday, if you have the time, to consider joining Rotary. We're a great organization, we don't bite, but we will put you to work. So please consider joining us at a future date or whenever it's convenient. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmella. And in recognition of Rotary Month, starting on May 1st, we will be flying the Rotary flag underneath the American flag on Green Avenue. Now just to show that Rotary, excuse me, does not have a monopoly on service above self, I want to call up Joe and Carol Glade, Glade, sorry, please come on up. Joe and Carol are volunteers of excellence to the borough of Madison. And Joe's not a bad racquetball player either, from having played in... These volunteers, regretfully, are leaving Madison come May. Definitely leaving June, when they have a closing on their house, and heading off to New Mexico. But to just put their volunteerism in perspective, in return, the state of Mexico is sending us four first-round draft choices in the next four years, and three volunteers will be named later. So that's, that's the effort they have given us. So proclamation, recognizing Joseph and Carol Glade. Whereas, Joseph and Carol Glade are longtime Madison residents and dedicated volunteers committed to making Madison a wonderful place in which to live. And whereas, Joseph Glade served on the Borough of Madison Zoning Board of Adjustment from 1986 to 1993, then again from 2008 through 2011. And whereas, Carol served on the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps as an active riding member, where she rode multiple day shifts. And whereas, Carol served as president of Madison Ambulance Corps for two years, and was instrumental in establishing new membership policies for the Corps. And whereas, both Joseph and Carol actively participated in many Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps events. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend thanks and appreciation to Joseph and Carol Glade for their efforts, dedication, commitment to the borough of Madison, and wish them well on their move to New Mexico and all future endeavors. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. This was unexpected, but we appreciate the recognition. Carol and I moved here 35 years ago, and she claims she was only 10 years old at the time. But, but she was very mature for her age. And one of the things that we love about Madison is the volunteers and the people that devote their time and efforts. Many of them are here in this room, and many of them we've spent time with over the years. And so we love Madison, we're sorry to be leaving. Although we're going to New Mexico, we'll still have fond memories of all the people we've associated with, and the town, and the good memories that we've had here. So thank you very much.
This is very endearing, and it's very lovely, and it's also a little embarrassing, because I think there are a lot of other people in here who spend a whole lot more time, and have made Madison really the town that Madison is today. Those of you who are sitting in these seats, and all the people who sat in your seats years and years and years before, have made it possible for us to live in a wonderful town like this, and to be able to sell our house and make decent returns, so we can move. But I also want to just point out some of my colleagues, because I, I played a very little role in the ambulance squad, and Bob, of course, Carol, and Lisa, and, please, 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 please. And Rachel, they just, they just represent, they represent the best there is. So thank you very much. This was really nice.
Thank you.
Before I do the last proclamation, we're gonna, we have the... Is Ella Grant here? Lisa Ellis, come on up. You've got your t-shirt right in your hand there. We want to recognize the 2013 winner of the May Day t-shirt contest. And if you walk down Main Street in Madison, you'll see the showing at Potio Real Estate of the past years, so you can see how this one is yet another great one with the ladybug on the leaf, and really showing, and this is a very appropriate since it's Earth Day, that we are recognizing the work that we do to make our earth look great, and you've got the leaf and ladybugs, all part of a healthy environment. And I understand you're a star of little track and field, and a fifth grader at Central Avenue School, where my two sons graduated. And also, I understand that art, especially designing t-shirts, runs in the family, as your sister Julia won the t-shirt contest just a few years ago. So congratulations on our t-shirt designer, and we will, hopefully everyone in this audience will be out there first Saturday in May, wearing that t-shirt with pride. Okay, you know? This is, well, thank you. And this is, this is the last proclamation, then I will sit down. A lot of special things going on. This is a special week, May 5th through, or special week is coming up next week, May 5th through the 11th. Whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, municipal clerks are pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality, impartiality, and rendering equal service. And whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, aka Liz, and Patty Michaeluso. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2013, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend our appreciation to Municipal Clerk Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to communities they represent. Your work is great. Come on down. Come on down. So, so on behalf of Rose City, Rose is for our clerk, and Liz, it is, in my short term as mayor and years as council, it's been a true honor working with you. You really represent Madison very well. Thank you.
It's an honor and privilege to serve both the council and the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reports from committees. Health, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Health Department has approved, has been approved to participate in the New Jersey Vaccine for Adults Program. This program allows those who are uninsured or underinsured to receive vaccines such as meningitis, hepatitis A, and hepatitis B. Vaccines should be available by May. Anybody that is interested in those vaccines should contact the public health nurses for details and employment, and appointments. One of the new initiatives from the Board of Health this year was to institute an employee wellness program. So there's two of them that are going to be provided by the Madison Health Department. And the first is Hep A-B and D-TAB vaccination program for all the DPW and emergency services personnel. The other is the second in 2013, educational system which will address skin cancer and prevention with a derma-scan on-site. Derma-scan machines assist in people seeing where there is damage that may need to be addressed by a physician. And you'll see later on that there, as one of the proactive things that we've talked about, you'll see a resolution with allowing these borough employees to get some extra exercise in by being a member of the YMCA. So you'll see that resolution later on. Madison High School Day of Service, we'll be participating with the Madison High School students with two initiatives for the Day of Service that's scheduled on May 31st. One of the things that we did at the Board of Health was kind of beautify it, it just needed to be painted. And our DPW staff, on rainy days, would come to Civic Center and paint, and it's very, very nice. So now we have bright yellow offices, and part of the initiative that the art students at the high school are gonna be doing is painting murals in those offices. The other one is a handwashing program for elementary school students, delivered by the high school students after being trained by Madison Health Department staff. Last Friday, Lisa Gula, who's our health officer, and Marlene Dolan, who was one of our nurses, attended the registration session at the high school, and they received a positive response. So we're looking forward to working with the students again this year. So we'll be waiting to hear if they've accepted our two programs. Lots of initiatives going on with Lisa Gula as being the new health officer for six months. She did a great presentation this past week to a group of seniors on green spring cleaning tips. So you could really take a look at that, because that's on the Health Department's website, and it should be there probably by the end of this week. It was very well received. I sat in for a little bit, and it was a great presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Sukamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The electric department is continuing pole transfers and new pole installations, and the department would like to thank the Patel family of Park Lane for allowing the department to gain access to a damaged pole through their property before they demolished their homes. That's it. Thank you.
And if there's any public works in engineering, Oscar, you can cover that during your report as a backup. Community affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have a few dates here. On May 1st, Poor Herbert is going to be doing a Give Back Day. 10% of the day's tab will go to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. On May 4th, that's May Day. There's a couple of things going on then. First, it's the townwide landscaping, followed by a pig roast, and what they'll call an after-party at the ambulance corps, which will start at 11:30 that morning. And then also on that day, the artwork, those art poles that you see going up in town, they'll be displaying the artwork that day. So it's gonna be a good day in Madison, so I encourage everybody to get out. On June 15th and 16th, I'll get back to that one. The Chamber of Commerce is actually starting their scholarship fund drive right now, and they're going to be holding a celebrity bartender showdown at Poor Herbert's on May 2nd. And they're right now taking applications for scholarships for Madison High School seniors, and those awards will be given out on June 11th at Hamilton Park. Now, on May 9th is Ladies Night Out, and you can get more information for that at the Chamber of Commerce's website. Now, the mayor talked about Union Beach before, and for most of us right now, Hurricane Sandy is, it's a memory, you know? We lived through it, life goes on. For the people down in Union Beach, they're still living that nightmare. If you were to go down there right now, many of the pictures of destroyed homes that you've seen, well, those homes are gone. What's left is an empty, an empty lot, there's nothing there. For the most part, they've received no federal help, they have received little or no help from insurance companies, the families are scattered around, and what we're trying to do now is just kind of get them over the hump. The mayor talked about some money that we got their ambulance squad, because, you know, the insurance covered the ambulances, but they didn't have the money to restock them. So they reached out, we got them some help. People that are hurting a lot, and you don't really see them, the children, they're going back, for the most part, they're not even going back to a home. And now with the summer coming up, you know, we want to do something for the children. Peg Cody was able to set up this campership program and get some money for that. And through the garage sale, which we just had, we raised some more money for it, the book sale raised a little money for these children. And on June 15th and 16th, the Rotary is going to be holding Rotary Festival, it's gonna be in the parking lot of Reality. The proceeds of that will go to Union Beach. I would encourage everybody here to tell their friends and their family to please come. We can use as much money as we can get to help these poor people. When we were down there, a woman came up to us and said, "Thank you so much." She couldn't even afford the transportation to get her child to camp. That's how desperate they are right now. So there'll be other events scheduled throughout the year, but right now, mark on your calendar June 15th and 16th in the Reality parking lot. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community affairs, I mean, sorry, we just were there. Public safety, Ms. Bailey, if you have anything for DPW.
I do, thank you, Mayor. Well, first I'll start with Project Community Pride. They're going to have a family night in collaboration with the Madison Board of Education at the Madison Junior School on... at the Madison Junior School on this Friday, April 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. They're hoping to engage a number of the Spanish-speaking parents to increase their awareness of their child's educational experience. Also, at the Madison High School, they have Mental Health Awareness Week. Project Community Pride is leading that. And they are speaking to the students about mental health issues. They're speaking to the kids about the stigma associated with mental health and trying to get the kids involved to understand that this shouldn't be a stigma. Then they are beginning their race preparations with Pfizer. Pfizer sponsors a race on May 22nd at 6:30. The proceeds will benefit Project Community Pride. And the major fundraiser for Project Community Pride is their breakfast, which will be held on May 17th, 8:00 a.m. at the Madison Hotel. You should be getting invitations. You can also go to the RoseNet website, and all of this helps Project Community Pride. Then the Madison Boy Scouts Troop 25 and the Madison Environmental Commission are again sponsoring the Madison Green Fair, Thursday, May 9th, 3:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. It's located on Green Village Road right in front of the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. And there'll be lots of different groups, tables, handouts, information. There'll be a tour of the All Green House that has the top lead certification over on Walnut Street. So it should be very exciting because it does help our town to recycle and to sustain ourselves. And then the 2013 recycling newsletter, which talks about garbage pickup, the twice-a-week garbage pickup is starting on May 20th. And so everybody should be aware that you will be able to now put up your garbage twice a week through the summer. And then also, on the state level, Christie Administration fully implements landmark fertilizer law to reduce pollution and keep waterways clean. This is important for us, too. We're using reformulated fertilizers on the lawns and to protect the environment. And this law was signed into place January 5th, 2011. The law applies only to lawn fertilizers, not those used in your gardens. And if you, you know, you're doing your own lawns, you should be familiar with this, that the products contain no phosphorus and low levels of nitrogen. And your landscapers should also be aware that this is extremely important to practice this on your lawns. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Bureau Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The budget now is done, and we just have a couple of loose ends we're working on. But the process of how we reach a budget agreement is currently being worked on for the next one. So it's one of these projects that never ends. This last week, Robert Califford and Tom Bittenger, I see he's in the audience, and I met with the objective of going through the S&amp;P guidelines that they use when they assess the creditworthiness of municipalities to determine if any of their efforts are applicable to Madison. And indeed, we found that several are. And so it's our intention to adopt those, probably create some others, and use them next year when we discuss the budget so that we can put it in a more objective context. And I'd like to think make the whole process a bit more transparent, although I felt it was pretty good this year. There's always room for improvement. So I'd like to again thank Tom for his work on this. And I will be reaching out to other citizens of Madison who have expertise in this area to give us a hand as we go forward.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received this week, Mayor.
All right, this is a first of two invitations for the public to come up and discuss. And this is the one again with limitations. You may discuss things on our agenda, discuss your agenda, which includes appropriation of $70,000 from the Water Capital Improvement for Replacement Truck, appropriation of $50,000 for purchase of police department vehicle, amendment to the open space recreation historic preservation ordinance to include quarterly reporting. The original number four has been removed, which is Madison Athletic Foundation fundraising partnership for the turf field project. And the resolution's also been removed. Councilman Cananello has been serving as liaison from the council back to the MAF. And since he is not here today, we are pushing that back to the first meeting in May. We are adding on the agenda a discussion on the resolution on the ad hoc committee for the master plan of the MRC. And you also may comment on any of the resolutions listed. Ordinances that are listed for hearing, you'll get your opportunity when those hearings come up. So if you're here to comment, for example, on either the private property underage drinking or the open space, there will be hearings for those. And so that'll be the appropriate time to comment. So with those guidelines, if you have something to comment, step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mary Ann.
Mary Ann McConnell, 142 Rachel Avenue.
No, I haven't started yet.
I'm not speaking. The topic's on the agenda.
If it's not on the agenda, you have to wait till for round two. Okay? Sorry.
Well, I don't think it will be. Oh, I'm sorry. If it's not contained, I misunderstood.
Not in the guidelines I just mentioned.
Did I cross out my name?
Well, I'll leave it there if you're coming back up. Thank you. Sorry. So it's again, things are listed under the discussion agenda and resolutions. Don?
Just had a question with Mrs. Bailey.
State name and address.
The Project Community Pride breakfast is on May 17th.
Correct.
At what time?
8 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go.
Sampson-Sircella Park Avenue, Madison. A couple of resolutions, Mayor, just a couple of questions.
Yep.
Resolution 155. There's a change order for $32,000. Can you tell me what that change order is? Does anybody know?
That is related to the lower part of Sampson Avenue, which was not part of the original contract because the positive bits that came back were able to complete that part. So from King's Road up to Woodland was in the original contract. We'll do a mill and overlay in the lower part of Sampson, which also certainly is in need of work. And so it's nice that we're able to fit it under the existing budget, and we'll be changing that. So it's not any surprise as it came on the original design.
Is the construction committee still active checking out these things?
Yes, and we have also our contract engineer observing the progress. That's Dennis Harrington.
Well, then, the next resolution is 156. You know, maybe on some of these projects, we could save some money. What I mean by, maybe we don't need a full-time inspector, maybe just a part-time inspector on some jobs. Because sometimes, like a job, you got to rip out a sidewalk, a 100-foot sidewalk, you don't need an inspector standing there eight hours watching rip out a concrete or digging a hole. It's like watching the grass grow. So in the future, if, you know, there's some jobs, maybe we could just use the part-time, just go in the morning, make sure they set up, and then at night, make sure it's safe and all that. But again, like I said, there's ways to save some money. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, two things on the Rosedale project and other projects. The engineer is not necessarily there for all eight hours, but he is there for key times such as pouring of concrete, asphalt being put down. And also, this is a state-funded project. There is requirements as far as independent oversight from an engineer, so.
That's good. Things are working. All right.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on the agenda items? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to agenda discussions. First one is appropriation of $70,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for replacement utility truck with accessories. And we got David here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to appropriate the money out of the Water Capital Improvement Fund for a utility truck for the Water Department. We're going to be replacing truck number 139. Usually, we do a 10-year rotation, but we're stretching it out to 11, 12 years. This truck is 11 years old, and it is a crucial piece of equipment for the Water Department and for the public works. It's used for Water Department and for plow and tow.
Questions for David? This is budgeted?
Yeah, this was all budgeted during the capital review.
All right, and this is ordinances listed for introduction. Well presented, David. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Appropriate $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of police department vehicle and accessories. And the chief is here.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I would like to appropriate $50,000 for the purchase of a Ford Interceptor SUV. Our vehicles have been aging over the past several years, and this will replace several vehicles that have been taken out of service due to maintenance issues.
Do we have questions for the chief?
Budgeted?
Yes.
All right, and this is again, ordinances listed for introduction. Well presented. Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to amending the open space recreation historic preservation ordinance to include quarterly reporting. Councilman Wolkowitz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As I was going through the process of deciding whether to recommend a change in the open space tax, I was approached by a large number of citizens of this town about the issue of open space generally, the MRC in particular, with a lot of questions regarding how the money is spent, how much money's in the account, how is it used, how is fundraising going for the fields, et cetera. And so it was my intention this evening to actually introduce two pieces. But as you heard earlier, because of the fact that Councilman Cananello was called away, we're putting one on hold. But the one we will address this evening has to do with the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Committee. And the intent of this is, as I've indicated, to make all of this as open as possible. So we've asked that on a calendar quarter basis, the first meeting thereafter. So in other words, this would be at the end of March, you get a report, the first meeting in April. At the end of June, you get a report, the first meeting in July, and similarly for the rest of the year. We'd like to hear about the status of ongoing projects, including time to completion and anticipated costs versus how they've been budgeted, any projects soon to be proposed or being considered, and the current balance in the open space trust fund. I want to emphasize, in no sense should this be viewed as a criticism or trying to fix something that's wrong with the Open Space Advisory Committee. Quite the contrary. I think this would be a benefit to them so that everyone understands the good work they've been doing and the good work I'm sure they'll continue to be doing. And as well, it gives them the opportunity to share with you information about their plans. Not only the projects ongoing, but the projects they're contemplating in the future. Thank you.
Council discussion. Janie?
Yeah, I agree, Ben. I think it is very important for us to have quarterly status reports for greater transparency. Now, my understanding is that the council and the administration really are responsible for all the financial aspects of the open space tax dollars.
That's correct.
And the CFO should be responsible for providing financial statements. I hope that the proposal here, one of the points here, that is number C over here, to provide the current balance in open space trust fund. To me, that is the responsibility, really, of the CFO. And also, part of item A here also talked about whether or not that the budget or the work is on budget. I will think that that will be kind of a joint responsibility of the department head who's responsible for actually implementing the work, plus the CFO. So that's point number one. And also, additional point is, I believe project implementation really should be the responsibility of the departments, whether or not it's the engineering department or DPW.
Which one, I'm sorry? I missed what you referred to.
I am referring to item A, part of A. The status of ongoing projects,
Right.
including time to completion and anticipated costs. I would think that the department, whichever department, whether or not it's DPW or engineering, should really be responsible for keeping track of the schedule, making sure that the project is moving along, and also keeping track to make sure that the project is on budget, on time and budget, right? So I think we can do this. But my take is that I believe that the report should really be coming from perhaps the borough staff along with the liaison with input from the committee and not put the entire responsibility of these items on the committee. As you know, this is an advisory committee. I think we need the data. We need the report. On a quarterly basis, it's great. But I think the report, it shouldn't be the sole responsibility of the committee.
Is your concern the amount of work we're asking them to do? Or is it that you view it not being their role?
It's more of, I think it's probably more appropriate to work it as a joint effort. And I will think that I will assign more of a role to the staff and to work the report along with the liaison and with input from the committee and not put the responsibility solely on the committee.
I think, in a way, just if I don't mind me interrupting, that this actually takes care of it. What I like about this is it puts the reporting part of it right in the ordinance that establishes the committee. So it is very open that you can see what the responsibilities of the committee are and that there is a reporting part. To address your thing, I look at this as, it's a quarterly open book test that obviously the committee can't provide the balance on their own. They can't provide the progress. But they're the ones that are going to make sure that it is all put together and they present it. So just like every other committee is working with staff. So they'll be using the staff resources to make sure it's presented in a single spot. And residents of future years, councils of future years can view this and see the ordinance and say, "All right, there's a reporting mechanism." The other thing that I like about this ordinance is the fact that it helps improve the communication between the council and the committee. And as a sitting council member, we have approved projects that didn't necessarily go through the committee. And since now it's a responsibility of the committee to keep track of everything, now the communication will be improved because there's an ordinance to hold everyone to task on that. And Ben, I kind of cut you off again.
No, 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 that's fine.
Carmella?
I think one of the most important things that we have to remember is advisory committees are exactly that to the mayor and the council. And it seems to me that we've gotten kind of away from that reporting system. So I think this amendment is actually going to help the committee become an intermediary to the council. I think that I always like to hear more about what their goals are. You know, years ago, and Ray and I talked about this the other day, each one of the committees were required to do an annual report at the end of the year. And it would state what the accomplishments were, what the goals for the next year. And I think that this is probably like one of the most important things that we can do is to amend this ordinance and give this advisory committee the ability to kind of oversee, you know, the departments and work and communicate better. So. So I think it's a great, it's a great first step for us.
Further comments?
If I may, I'd just like to follow up on what Councilwoman Vitale said. I view this as a template for a number of other committees that operate basically on the edges of the official body of the town. So we have a number of groups who either raise money, or allocate money, or have some impact on how money is spent, and as I was going through the budget process, I had a hard time sometimes figuring out what they were doing. And if I had a hard time and I was sitting there with volumes of material, I suspect any one of you who was interested had a harder time. So all I'd be attempting to do, and you'll hear more of this in the future, is to establish a means of reporting of the various entities that operate in the expanded sense within our borough government, and that's what's intended here.
Other comments?
The one or other thing I would suggest, and I don't think we need to change the ordinance, but because the open space fund has done some tremendous things over the years, is to produce a annual report that can be put on PDF form, and, you know, more of a accomplishments and not just the numbers things, but, you know, up to date, it could be from day one up to date, but some way to really talk about their accomplishments.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah.
Because it says in the ordinance, the annual, we must produce an annual report.
Thank you.
The Sac Committee has done that.
Very good, so we'll just make sure we share it in a nice way. You're doing great things there. So this is ordinance 15-2013, it's listed for introduction. All right, ad hoc committee for the MRC master plan, this is resolution...
146.
46?
146.
146, sorry, yeah, it's later in the year here. And Jeanie, you asked us to be added?
Yes, one question here. 146, right, okay. Looking at the makeup of the committee, I am concerned that, oh, just for those of you sitting out there and not having this in front of you, resolution 146 is to establish an ad hoc advisory committee for the development of a master plan for the Madison Recreation Center. Now, this committee is, it's great, this is work absolutely needed, however, I'm concerned that the liaison to Public Works and Engineering, it's not part of the committee. As we all know, that's a very important aspect of the plan, to have both DPW and Engineering Department involved.
You ready to have three members?
Yep, so, yeah, it's limited to three members, so there's not the, and it's a...
I guess currently we have, I'd rather not use names, but use the position.
Well, it's in the resolution, we're not talking about their qualifications, we're just, as far as the council, I think it's fair, we're not talking about the other volunteers.
Right.
Ken Wolkowitz, Bob Landrigan, and Ostry Bailey.
So that, those are the liaison to finance, community affairs, and public safety.
Now, open space.
Oh, so, okay, for the open space. So I would think it's very important to include a liaison of Public Works and Engineering as part of the committee.
What I would like to suggest as an alternative to that, I think the Borough Engineer Bob Vogel could be added to this committee. He would certainly address anything related to DPW. I mean, this is a group of people that are going to go and take the undeveloped 39 acres of land out by the Recreation Center and put together a master plan of how that can be developed for anyone who's not involved in sports, passive recreation. It's to look at hiking trails, maybe more community gardens, things along those lines. If you look at the makeup of this group, and it's actually posted outside, if you want to look at it later, you have the key elements in there right now. You have representatives from a lot of the potential user groups, you have the open space and the environmental committee involved in it as well. I think if you add Bob Vogel to it, it wouldn't create any problems with us having multiple council members, and I think it'd be well served.
And as the master plan is the high-level design, so as you move forward with actual projects, you would, at that point, involve DPW and Engineering.
Precisely.
And certainly would be appropriate.
Yep, I agree.
So we'll move it with the, as it stands, with the addition of Bob Vogel?
Yes.
And we're assuming that Ray is okay with Bob Vogel representing both Engineering and DPW's perspective, right? Ray?
Sure, that'd be fine.
And again, to clarify, this is an ad hoc committee, which means it expires, it's also being done through resolution, so this expires on December 31st, and so if the work is not done, it would have to be reconstituted by next year's council, and we are, even though a good part of the property has been already developed in the turf field, you need to overlook, you need to look over the full site as these things have a synergy, you know, how you locate things on the passive recreation as it complements what's already there.
Yep.
Right. So we're moving on to ordinances for hearings.
Okay, the ordinances, the ordinances scheduled for a hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at regular meetings of the council held on both April 1st and April 8th, 2013. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public.
I call it ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 6-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $35,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to study the Madison Public Library HVAC system.
I open the hearing for anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 6-2013. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 6-2013.
I second.
Council discussion. Do we all call a vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 6-2013 finally adopted and ask the clerk to publish the ordinance in accordance to the law. Sorry.
Ordinance 7-2013 is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 4-2004, which established the municipal open space recreation and historic preservation trust fund.
I open ordinance 7, the hearing for ordinance 7-2013. Anyone wishing to comment, please step up to the lecture.
Mayor, as I indicated before us, the meeting commenced this evening, I'd like to turn everyone's attention to the eighth whereas clause found on the first page. Some may consider this comment wordsmithing, but I'm, given my background, I would be concerned with the second line there, environmental remediation work at the MRC, which we do understand, there is something that needs to be addressed, however, it's not at the playing fields. So I think just a qualifying phrase should be that those two fields do not have the environmental problem, given the number of children that play on there six, seven days a week. In the third line, I think we should address the environmental issues that are at Bailey Ellard, and further clarify that the children are not playing on the area that's currently fenced off. Again, I'm not legal counsel for the borough, but I would, I would like to see that language included. On the second page, the third whereas clause, which is actually the 11th overall, third whereas clause on the second page. Again, some may consider it wordsmithing, but I'd like to have the MAF endeavors to raise. Mayor, I don't know where this 934,000 came from, even with my accounting background, I can't, I can't get the number to correspond with the discussions that you and I have had, and the meeting that we had on March 19th. I'd also like to see the phrase "equal installments" removed, I don't think that needs to be set forth in this ordinance. And most importantly, and I've asked this on several occasions, I don't, I didn't see it in the resolution, nor have I seen it in this ordinance, I'd like a description of the formula, Mayor, that we talked about at the March 19th meeting, which included the user fees, included the rental income, signage, other fundraising events. I mean, it was in our presentation that I believe was in January, we presented it again in March, I don't know why we can't have something in writing so that it's clear. I'm not sure who will be here two years from now, I'm not sure who will be here five years from now. And then the other thing I'd like somehow, Mayor, and we can discuss at some other point, but somehow to eliminate the glitches that we experienced with respect to our fundraising effort with a financial institution. Somehow, some way, you know, hopefully that won't occur again, but that, that was a significant financial institution that was considering giving money, and something happened, and they, you know, they may come back, I don't know, but how do we avoid that in the future? Because that impacts on what the MAF endeavors to do. So somehow we need to coordinate our efforts, and I hope we can do that now.
What we'll do is we'll get through the hearing, then we can comment on those during the council, but we'll cover those points, I think I got them all.
He doesn't even know what he's talking about.
And just to go through the items that were covered, I think some of these are minor and introduction could go, or the hearing could go through without having to reintroduce, and others might be more involved. The, you know, I certainly understand the, some of the wherases on the first page, and rather than go into more detail, maybe the thing is actually less detailed, do we truly need to, you know, mention remediation? This is an ordinance that will stand in the books and is driving the current rate at talking about, you know, whereas, the last, open space revenues are needed to complete paving, fencing, and other work, or just, have it say, you know, needed to complete work at the MRC site and complete improvements at Bailey Ellard. You know, not having to go into detail.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but I think it should be noted that when we were doing, oh, Betsy Omen was doing grant, we had to have come up with a name for the 49 acres, and we all agreed that the 49 acres really is recognized at this point in time as a Madison Recreation Complex. It doesn't apply just to the turf fields, it applies to the entire 49 acres at this point.
So if we just, open space revenues are needed to complete projects at the Madison Recreation Center site and improvements at Bailey Ellard recreational fields.
Yep, that's fine, yeah.
Gina, that's, that's good. The whereas, I, so it's still page, we'll start at page one before we, are we good with page one? So the third whereas, I'm certainly comfortable, has the Madison Athletic Foundation endeavors to raise 934,301, and yes, I can flip back to all the conversations, I can't do it right now, but I know, having done this umpteen times with the principal payments already made and so on, we come up with that, why we come up with 301, I'm not, but why we didn't round off, but anyway, it does flip back, so we can show how that flips back. The coordinated efforts, I don't think is a, something that should be in ordinance, but certainly we can even address in the resolution, as we get back to that, that there'll be a level of coordination between the borough, this relates to comments of a major donor, that, because efforts might not have been coordinated, that we address that in the resolution, because we're talking about in the resolution, the agreement.
Mayor, I'm familiar with what happened, I don't even think it's necessary to put that in there. I think it was just, I'm not going to go into the details, but it was just a one-off. In general, from what I understand, there has been cooperation and coordination, you know, in efforts to raise money. That's a one-off that maybe you could have with Nino afterward.
Certainly I've had a conversation with major donors, I can share.
You know, I really, I have to tell you this, I don't know what anybody's talking about here.
I don't either.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't want anything to go in an ordinance that I'm going to have to vote on tonight, that I don't know anything about.
As I said, any, any talk about a major, that is not appropriate for an ordinance.
Absolutely.
So that, that wouldn't go in there. I think it is appropriate to have a coordinated effort between the borough and a fundraising entity, and we can address it in another manner.
But that's the norm, I mean, we, we always coordinate, we coordinate with Rotary, we coordinate whatever, you know, so, I mean, that's, that's on a personal level of what we do, it shouldn't be in an ordinance like that, I don't think.
No, I agree.
Since I don't know what you're talking about.
And Gina's not, that is not appropriate to...
So if I understand correctly, we corrected the first page, we're being more general in our terms.
Yep.
On the second page, the third whereas, we're just going to take out the word "equal."
Take out the word, the other is...
Endeavor, too.
Endeavor.
Why did I have "stand"? Okay, over the next five years, okay?
Yeah.
And then what else, what other language has to be removed? I think that's it.
So that third whereas would be Madison Athletic Foundation will endeavor to raise 934,301 to reduce the outstanding MRC turf field improvements.
Period.
Period.
Right.
Actually, over the next, over the next five years stays, stays in.
That, if I may, that makes a foot to the other piece.
Yep.
And it's consistent. The number's a bit different, and we had rounded up. I don't care what we do, but it should be consistent. I mean, we're talking about a couple of thousand dollars on a $3.1 million bill, so I'm, you know, it's rounding up.
The formula.
Yes. I don't think that's necessary for the ordinance to have the formula in there, it is, I think we can put that as part of the resolution since that will be outlining the, clarifying the agreement, and that's where we're talking about the ongoing commitment between the borough and the MAF. I will, since you're representing the MAF, and this is their mention, I will allow you to step back up there.
That formula has been discussed for many years, it came out of the RAC Committee, so it's important to us that we're clear on what will be considered towards the $900,000.
Right, and I think that's appropriate in the resolution since it is just, the whereas really is just defining...
I know what a whereas clause is, I don't mean to, but if the resolution follows and we don't agree that the formula should be included in the resolution, or the terms of the formula, now I have a, now I have an ordinance out here, and it makes it appear as though MAF didn't want to fulfill its commitment. And we do, we just want to make sure it continues with the formula that was agreed to.
Correct, yep.
Wait, who agreed to what formula?
It was the, basically the presentation that was made in January, we took that presentation and used it to drive the balance to be bonded, which then drove the open space.
That's exactly right. We did it before council, and we repeated it again on that March 19th meeting.
And just as a quick overview without the formula in front of it, which included its direct solicitations, the hall, wall of fame, signage, special events.
Rental income, user fees.
Actually, rental income and user fees are not part of the 900.
They are, Mayor.
No, if we go back to the presentation, we went, and the numbers we agreed to, we had pulled that out, we agreed that those go towards the debt service of the field, so they are going back towards the field, but it was not part of the 900,000. So we... So we came up, we started with a.
This is what I'm worried about. See, maybe you should just hold this in abeyance for another couple of weeks.
We had to move this forward, the resolution clarified. And I know you, it's hard to say the trust, but this is, drive goes back right to those numbers and I can forward it to you again.
Mayor, we're a volunteer organization. I've been pretty clear with the formula. You can, we will discuss it later, pass your ordinance, but I mean, the formula's, we've been clear on it. It needed to include those four or five factors.
Yeah, and those are, the user fees and rentals are not part of the 900,000.
I have a very, if I may.
Okay, Ben, I don't know if you have it in front of you or no.
No, I don't.
Okay, Ben in the box.
But I have a very simple objective. I mean, all I need to know is how much money the MAF is committed to raising to pay down the three point, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but the 3.1 something million dollars remaining because we're bonding whatever the MAF is not committed to raising. Now, we understand, you know, hopefully you'll raise much more than that and I'm sure there'll be many uses for that prop, for that land, I mean, I'm sorry, for that money to be applied to that property. But the issue of the moment, as far as I'm concerned, is what number belongs in there? And I wasn't at this meeting where a formula was presented, but I did have a long conversation in the presence of the mayor with councilman Cattell and Nello, at which point we agreed on 940,000. And that was supposedly consistent with all prior discussions and so that's how we plugged the number in. If this number is much too large in the consideration, the MAF's capacity, what they feel they're committed to, we need to know that, at which point I would amend, just say the open space tax remains at two. The only reason we got through a reduction of 1.8 is because we factored in the potential of 940,000 coming through some other vehicle in taxation. So I'm, you know, I don't know about the formula, but all I know is I need the number.
Yeah, what.
The number, again, I'm not sure how you backed into 931,000. It's in the ballpark, but the formula has been discussed. It was presented in January, it was presented in March. I don't know why this is so confusing.
Okay, here we go.
Mayor, may I ask what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the presentation that, the spreadsheet that we went over on that date. So, so we have 75,000, this is the five, this is the forward look. $75,000 special events, 100,000 annual appeal, 175,000 M-Club, 150,000 raffles, 75,000 field signs, 300,000 of other major sponsorships, scoreboard, whatever. That came up to 875 and then we had the prior amount that was already raised by the MAF, which is, where'd I go? So, yeah, so that was the, but that included money raised for the field house, user fees up to date and all that, brought us up to the 1.119 and then we took back out the field house. So basically that, that number represents only the, those items I mentioned. It does, the user fees estimated 85,000 is part of the overall formula, but not is on the, is not on the shoulders of the MAF because that will, will be coming back to the ordinance to back those up as discussed. So that becomes strictly a borough operation because it's not fundraising, it's a fee.
No, but we agreed you could collect it, but we wanted credit for it because that's the formula that came out of the RAC.
But it's not part of, we'd have to, in order for the numbers to foot, we'd have to increase the number in the ordinance to reflect the 85,000 here. We gave you, as we stated in that meeting, we would give you credit for what was brought up, brought in through 2012 and moving forward, it would be collected separately and go directly towards the project through the borough, but the MAF would not be held responsible. So, and actually you're not held, it wouldn't be part of your target because we only want, need you to work on the actual fundraising.
Okay, Mayor, I think we have a disagreement. So you folks do what you think is best. Let's reconvene at your pleasure and we'll figure out what the resolution should say. But for the record, the ordinance, I don't think is complete at the moment. So I don't want to belabor it any longer because there's a lot, you have a long meeting and we have a lot of people here this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. Bob?
I could just back it up real quick, it'll take about two minutes. The original Brian Agnew presentation said after five years, the MAF was going to raise 1.25 million dollars. That was user fees, rental agreements and then all the fundraising efforts. If you take out the user fees and rental agreements, that leaves 875,000, okay? That would be what your fundraiser would have to cover. We would then just take on the responsibility of collecting the user fees and rental agreements. Your fundraiser just, instead of being 1.25 million, which we are committing, instead of being 1.25 million, would just be the fundraising efforts of 875,000 plus that incremental that Councilman Cattell Nello pointed out would have to be paid each year, you know, like that, roughly $10,000 a year. So over five years, that's about 60,000. So if you take 875 plus 60, that comes out to roughly the 931.
Yes, so, and as they work on the resolution, which is the more deals directly with the formal agreement with the MAF, we'll make sure, we've got three weeks between now and the next council meeting, so we'll have time to work on that and we'll incorporate it as appropriate. So at this point, we have the other minor changes. Any other discussion? Gina?
Before I talk about the, the new tax rate that we're talking about here, I was very confused about what we're talking about regarding a glitch in fundraising. Perhaps it's not a conversation here, but I certainly would like to know what went on. I wanted to make sure that we do everything possible to help the fundraising effort. And if we have a misunderstanding of anything in the past that kind of make the volunteer group believe that we're undermining their effort, we certainly need to correct that and.
There was, we will discuss that where appropriate and rest assured to the public, it was, it's nothing major.
Okay, all right. And regarding the tax rate, if I may go back to our discussion back on April 1st. At that meeting, we, the council decided that $100,000 was the right amount of the reserve for use other than the bond payment. And then subsequently at our April 8th meeting, I said that considering other potential use and needs for open space improvement. I'm sorry?
No, I'm just indicating I want to respond.
Okay, other potential use and in terms of open space improvement and historic preservation projects, I was in favor of that $100,000 reserve. And also at that point, I stated that I was in favor of collecting $494,000 annually, which is a tax rate of approximately 1.5%. With the $70,000 in user fees and also rental income, this amount will be sufficient for the $464,000 of bond payment for the first year. More than $100,000 of reserve will be available in subsequent years since the bond payment will gradually reduce year after year. However, the majority of the council decided to increase the reserve to $215,000 to accommodate the worst-case scenario if the MAF were to stop fundraising and collecting user and rental fees. This scenario means we will most likely end up with a lot more than $200,000 per year and we will be looking for projects to spend this money. This seems contrary to our goal to be conservative. To me, being conservative is to tax based on needs, not just building up the reserves and then looking for ways to spend the already collected tax dollars. I'm sure many residents agree with this philosophy. I believe a tax rate of 1.5 will sufficiently meet our needs. Thank you.
Ben in the box?
Yes. A few things. One is when, I remember that discussion because I was the one who proposed the amount and I did that with the understanding, which proved to be incorrect, that the, we could put triggers into this ordinance which would permit the rate on the open space tax to rise or to decline based on any number of parameters. We were subsequently told it could, it could not happen that way and that advice of council was to make it as conservative as possible. If I run through the numbers, had the fields not been included, all right, not been included, the Open Space Advisory Committee would have been looking at approximately $216,000 a year to apply to open space projects. With your suggestion, that number goes to less than 100,000 or approximately 100,000, locked in. We passed, we have talked about passing an ordinance that would have the Open Space Advisory Committee report to us regularly. They cannot spend money unless this council approves. So it's not as if the money's going to sit there and get spent willy-nilly at someone's, you know, capricious notion of how it should be spent. It must come back here. So the only reason for suggesting an uptick in rate was because the rate cannot be automatically set upwards. And as a result, we're basically bleeding our open space tax to pay for the fields if we take your suggestion, which I don't think this town really wants to do. Now, I could be wrong, but based on the feedback I got from quite a few people, I didn't hear a ground swell of enthusiasm for basically ending any open space activities, which essentially we would be doing here. The other thing is, it's not 1.5.
Ben will finish and then Bob.
It's not 1.5, it's 1.65, would get you to the number you suggested. As I mentioned before, the difference between 1.65 and 1.8 on that hypothetical average Madison house is 20 cents a week. So for 20 cents a week, I think we get a bargain. And I really, I mean, of all the things we've talked about and argued over in the course of this discussion to get us to a point of having a budget, I can't believe we're down to talking about 20 cents a week.
Bob?
Sure. I guess I'm having a problem with some of the comments that was stated or some misquotes that I just heard. Okay, first of all, we're banking on the MAF not doing their job. I believe in the discussion, it was said that in some years, due to unforeseen circumstances such as a hurricane Sandy or a downtick in the economy like the sequester, they may not be able to do their job. They may not be able to raise the money that's needed. And I even cited the fact that as an active member of an organization that relies solely on donations, that's a big challenge, especially in a rough economy. So what we want to do is make sure that we have the money to pay the bill. That's number one. So we're not really looking, counting on they're not doing their job, that's number one. Then when you talk about looking for ways to spend money, well, I remember in those earlier conversations, we weren't looking for ways to spend money. There's work there that needs to be finished. The parking lot needs to be completed. The road leading into the MRC needs to be completed. There are no stands for children's to sit on. That needs to be done. And there's also some remediation work that needs to be done. So we're not looking for ways to spend money. And then when you also take into account that that's not the only project in town that we have to be looking at. Our children need good, safe fields to play on and those two turf fields are not the end-all and be-all. Forgetting about Ballyheller, because I know that's going to be a trigger point, the other grass fields in town are in bad shape. The work to remediate them, and when I say remediate is to put grass seed down and to grow them so our children can play on them, was to be paid for out of open space money. That's what it's there for. We have some historic preservation work, which in my mind sets Madison apart. It's not looking for ways to spend money, it's what work needs to be done. That's what open space is there for. It's not just to pay for a turf field, period. $100,000 after we sat back doesn't cut it. And if you want to be realistic and you want to be prudent and if you forget about all the other work that needs to be done, the reality of it is that in any given year, the fundraising effort could fall short, not due to any lack of effort on the part of the MAF, because they are all residents of the town, they're all volunteers, they want to do their job, their reputations depend on it because they have to walk down Main Street at the end of the day. But the reality of it is, a bill has to be paid to not only pay the debt, but to finish the work and the way you do it is to have appropriate and enough money in open space and that's through Putin's conservative budgeting. Because if you fall short in open space, the bill still's got to be paid. You're going to pay for it in your property taxes. It's as simple as that. You could take it either out of your left pocket or your right pocket, but you're still going to pay for it.
Gina?
Yes, I just would like to clarify some of the numbers presented here. With the rate of 1.5, I believe the difference between the 1.5 Ben and the 1.56 is counting the rental and user fee income versus not counting that money. I think that's the calculation difference that we've noticed at a prior council meeting. And with the, with the 1.5 that I'm talking about here, I, I believe that will be sufficient not only to pay for the bond payment, but we still will have additional approximately close to $100,000 per year for other use. So it's not just paying for the debt and nothing else. It's not as much as 215,000, but we will still have that 100,000 in reserve for other use. Thank you.
Ben?
You know, the only thing I would say is, again, I, you know, I'm the author of the 100,000 number and I thought it was a perfectly good number if we could build triggers in. Since we can't, it's, you know, it's really, to my way of thinking, given the bonding expenses we have, it's not prudent to go ahead and try and slice it as thin as possible. And that's my concern. Also, the 70,000 seems to still be some talking point here, so I wouldn't count it and write that quickly. If it comes in, so much the better, that's great. But if it doesn't come in, then we're still at 1.65 versus 1.8 and that is 20 cents. Now, if you're correct and the money does come in and it is 70,000 and we can count it every year, I think that takes us, if I'm thinking about this properly, to 1.45, not 1.5. And if we go to 1.45, you're right, I'm talking about 40 cents a week, not 20. So I stand corrected.
Okay. I think we're ready. Just two, two quick things to clarify, confirm, one the other, which is forgotten, is the power of matching grants through the open space that we have is, and it's not just open space, it's historic preservation. We have not, we have Luke Miller to show off for historic preservation, but Gaines Library and other opportunities are out there and those are ripe for giving $1 and getting $4 back. The other is, this, this, just like everything else, is can be addressed on an annual basis by a sitting council, within the first quarter of the year and adjusted up to 2 cents. I think we're ready for roll call vote.
I don't think we moved.
I think we have to move.
I'm sorry, we're not ready for roll call vote. No, we actually, we missed, we went into council discussion without the motion, okay. I apologize for that.
No, it's all right. So I make a motion to move ordinance 7-2013.
I'll second it.
And we won't go into discussion now, we won't go into it.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 7-2013 finally adopted and ask that the clerk publish the ordinance in accordance to the law.
The ordinance 8-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison prohibiting the possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages by underage persons on private property and. or consumption of alcoholic beverages by underage persons on private property and supplementing the Madison Borough Ordinance Code with two, with a new section, chapter 233.
All right. And before I open this hearing, I just want to, with some input, we are minimally looking at, if this does pass tonight, coming back with at least one amendment, which would be add a Good Samaritan clause protecting those that make phone calls to when the health of and well-being of those involved are, is, is in danger. So with that, I open the hearing on ordinance 8, 2013. Ask anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step up the lecture and state their name, their address, and please, please keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, Frank Merch, La Wonaca Way. I saw some of you here in the summer talking about alcohol again, so it's odd that I'm here yet again talking about alcohol. I am happy to hear that there is a possible amendment coming forward or another ordinance about Good Samaritan. I just want to speak to that, just so I can get it on record, but also until it's actually out there, it doesn't exist. To sort of put this into perspective, about seven years ago, I got a phone call from my father, who said, Frank, I'm having chest pain, my left arm is numb, and I'm short of breath. What should I do? I said, well, go to the hospital. He goes, I think I'm just going to burp. And I said, well, go to the hospital. And he said, well, you know, I'm worried about the cause, it's nothing. I said, Dad, if it's just indigestion, you'll be embarrassed. If it's not, you're going to be dead. I bring up that example for one reason. Many people in this room are much closer to that scenario than underage drinking. And there's a few people here that are close to underage drinking, and I can tell you, I've made a decision in my own career. I've worked at, for a high school for five years, then at Drew University for the last 14. I won't work at an institution that doesn't have a Good Samaritan policy. Why? Because I think that every life is much more important than a $250 fine. If a 63-year-old man is having a debate in his head whether or not to go seek medical help, what do you think a 16-year-old is, is going to do? That is my main push. I strongly encourage this council to please, please, please bring forward a Good Samaritan policy, a law, go ahead and support that and endorse it, and I want to see them enact it at the same time. Because I think it's incredibly important during graduation season to have two laws out there, one of them thinking that we can go ahead and call for help. Earlier tonight, we talked about the great services we have here in the town of Madison. We are very honored and privileged to have an amazing police department, fire department, and first aid squad. I think every single one of those quality employees and volunteers recognize that they cannot go ahead and address a problem that they are not notified of. Please pass a Good Samaritan clause. It is vital for the safety. I've read the reports about this ordinance coming up last meeting. Everyone talks about the safety of the children in town. That is my big push for you. If you want to have safety, please have Good Samaritan. My dad's a Baptist minister. I won't take more than my three minutes. Let me just put my address down here, then I'll sit down. But thank you, and please make sure that that comes forward and pass it, and I'll probably annoy you the next time it comes up. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Frank. Sam?
I support, Sam, Socialia Park Avenue, I support that also. But I'm just going to throw this in, and I know, I know we talked about it a year or so ago, but, you know, we have a lot of restaurants in town. And as an ex-tavern owner, the biggest pain that I had is when one of the restaurants let the kids under, like a kid 21 can go with a girl 16-years-old to a place that has no liquor license, and open a bottle of wine. I just wonder if this could be tied into some of the restaurants that don't have liquor license. In other words, you know, a lot of, the responsibility is for the, for a person with liquor license to make sure everybody's of age. But you've got restaurants that have no liquor license, they can't, so I don't know, if somehow we could tie this in, not only residents, we've got some stores and some restaurants and bars. That's, I don't know, you understand what I'm trying to say, Ray?
Yeah, so. So as far as a, a restaurant that's a bring-your-own, a, there's underage drinking going on, how would this law affect, how would this ordinance affect that restaurant?
As far, I mean, as far as, well, I, one, which we were just talking about, it's regulated by the state, but as far as, this is specifically on private property, so I don't necessarily know. I think, I think there would be a distinction between a restaurant, which is, you know, open to the public, whereas this is, I think, more targeted towards homes and private property like that. So I think there is a bit of a distinction there.
Others wishing to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Bishop, and I'm the president of the student government of Drew University, as well as the president of the College Democrats. I'm joined this evening by several members of my cabinet, Special Envoy Dylan Jones, our Budget Appropriations Chair, Tim Andrus, and the Vice President of the College Democrats, Storm Weish. The primary mission of our student government is to work towards addressing the immediate concerns of the student body, and it is with this mission that we are here today. While I believe that there is a lot of good intention behind this ordinance, I fear that there are several significant problems that have been overlooked. The one that my colleagues and I are most concerned with is that it may jeopardize the health and safety of our students. At our university, we have in place a policy, which we refer to as the Good Samaritan policy. Students are able to feel secure in calling our public safety force if there is any sort of medical emergency relating to alcohol. And it is with the security that our students are able to make their best decisions. Without this protection, I'm afraid that students will fear making the right decisions, and also face the consequences of undue, undue penalties that this ordinance imposes. Over the last year, our student government and my club have worked towards engaging with the local Madison community a lot more than we have in the past. It saddens me that even with this greater connection, the student voice was not consulted on this issue. We are part of this community and very proud to be so. This town, its businesses, and its residents all make us feel welcome on a daily basis and contribute to the experience that we have at Drew. It is rare that it is necessary for us to come to a council meeting to voice our concerns on town matters. Yet this is an issue that affects the health and safety of our community, and it is one that we cannot stay silent for. I implore you all to take into consideration the voice of our student body and the possible life and death consequences of passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Very much, very well spoken. Others wishing to be heard?
Suzanne Young, Nine Green Hill Road in Madison. I just read about this ordinance in the paper last week, and it just sort of bothered me, I guess, the tone of the information that is presented. It seems to, it seems to me that our efforts to curb unhealthy drinking over the past years has gotten worse and not better. You know, as we've raised the drinking age and cracked down on, on underage drinking, the binge drinking has just gone up, and I don't think that our, our young adults are making the best decisions. And I know that that is a legal issue that has much greater bearing than just this ordinance. So I know that that's more about the drinking age that I have an issue with, but I do wonder about the necessity of this ordinance. And I guess in particular, I am concerned that the punishment of taking away driving privileges, if there's one thing that I have seen over the years with our young people, is that the, their responsibility, from what I can see, with their drinking and driving has been outstanding. You know, from when I was a, when I was a youth, and the choices that our kids make today, and to not drink and drive has been incredible. And so to have that as a punishment, to take away their license privileges, just doesn't seem to add up to me if they are in a, in a house drinking and has nothing to do with driving. So yes, I think that if there's anything that has to do with their drinking and driving, then licenses should be, you know, an appropriate punishment. But I question why the ordinance would include that as the punishment. So just overall, and this is the first I'm hearing about this this past week, so I don't really support the ordinance overall, but in particular, I don't support the particular punishments that are, go along with it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hi, Don. Mycopus, 10 La Wonaca, here in Madison. I'm not going to be as, as, as intimately knowledgeable as, as a student, as, as Andrew and Frank are back there, as far as the amnesty and the, the Good Samaritan policy. But I can tell you from working at Drew University, living in Madison for, for 12 years now, I've seen great strides at Drew University as far as their drinking policy and, and the programs and policies that we have in place right now. We went through this council, I don't know how many months ago, and produced, and showed everybody. You know, we came up here and said where the, where we're going with this, and, and all the, the success stories that we have. And, and even talking to, you know, Bob, and talking to you, as, as far as the calls to Drew University are at a drastic decline. We're winning the battle. We're, we're getting there. We're, we're doing things at our university that, I'm going to be honest with you, I wish were in place when I went to college. I'm not going to tell you how many years ago. So I just would hate to see right now something put into place that makes us take a step backwards. And without the Good Samaritan part in that, in this ordinance, we are going to take a step backwards at Drew University. We are going to have students afraid to call when a friend is in trouble. So that's all I have to say. I mean, I've been witnessing it, I've been watching it, they've been involved in it. So it's, it's something that I feel extremely passionate about. And really, that I wish it was part of this that you could vote on today, but it's something that we're, we're going to continue to follow and, and push as hard as we can from a university perspective, and I'll be honest with you, as a human being perspective going forward. Thanks.
And that, wait, wait until the hearing is, oh yeah, sure. Bob, sorry. Others from, taking a long way around. I'm going to, I can do that again, I can start you three minutes sooner.
Eric Range, Bellew Avenue. I also work at Drew University. I also worked for Fairleigh Dickinson University at the time that Florham Park passed a similar ordinance, and actually worked in student conduct at that time. I would encourage this body to take a step back, slow down, and look at what the goals are of the ordinance and the problems that potentially we're trying to solve, and not rush into an ordinance today that would have to be amended almost immediately to address some of these other concerns. And that's from, you know, the adult Drew perspective, but also some of the other comments made tonight, how this ordinance treats adults who are 19, 20, whether we like to think of them as adults or not, they, they are, and a 16 or 17-year-old at their parents' house, the same seems a bit cockeyed to me. So I would encourage the, the council to take a step back, look at what the problem is that we're trying to address, and then move forward with an appropriate ordinance to address all those concerns stated tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing. And now we'll do the motion.
I'll move ordinance 8-2013.
Second half.
And council discussion. Jeanne?
Yeah.
Well, as I said at the last council meeting, I, I'm supportive of this ordinance, because I believe that the intent is to deter underage drinking. That is, to me, that's about potentially saving lives, young lives. However, it's a concern when, when we hear, this evening here, that students, with this the way it is now, if we pass it, that students will be afraid to call. To me, that's not really saving lives. That's going exactly the opposite. So my question to the rest of the council is that, or maybe Bob, or the attorney, is that what will be the, the problem with delaying this for us to have an opportunity to put in the Good Samaritan clause in there, which we said that we will consider anyway, and, and to delay this one for another two meetings? I understand that it will be a reintroduction, right, because it's a significant change, and it will take actually two council meetings to, to, to approve this. I mean, of course, we'll be delaying this for a month, but are there any other disadvantages of not approving this and do it right the first time?
Certainly the, just on a straight answer, yeah, if, that, if it's delayed, it'd be introduced at the May 13th meeting, I believe, and then the...
The last meeting.
The last meeting, which is Wednesday, the second Wednes, the last Wednesday of the month, because of Memorial Day.
I, I think that one of the most important things that we're kind of forgetting is the real issue here about this whole thing. You know, I, I know a lot of you kids, and, you know, I sit as liaison on MASA, which is, is a great group of people, and there's a couple of people that sit on the MASA board from your organization. And I know the great strides that are, are happening. And I raised two kids who went off to college, so I know exactly what's going on, absolutely. But I have to tell you that when, last September, I think it was, when they gave a presentation at Madison High School every 15 minutes, I was like, I was absolutely appalled to see the destruction that underage drinking can have an effect on. Plus the fact, you know, doing the research on this and, and talking to lots and lots of people medically, this has a disturbing effect on young minds. So our next step was to seat Judge Troxel and Mary Ann McCord, who is our prosecutor. And we sat and we talked a great deal about the circumstances. I, I know one of your questions was about taking the driver's license away and whatever. One of, one of the most important things is that the state gives us the opportunity as a municipality to assume this ordinance. We put in some, it's really added the state ordinance, the $250, you know, the, you know, taking the driver's license away. But in conversations with the prosecutor and with the judge, that's not necessarily what's happening. What we were trying to prevent with this type of ordinance is that anybody who gets caught with underage drinking is not, is not brought before the judge and the prosecutor, and is going to end up with a click on, on their, on their resume. That's going to kind of follow them for the rest of their lives. And one of the, the things that we talked about with the judge is, that's not necessarily the $250 fine or whatever. You know, you're brought to a juvenile officer. So there's lots of, of different ways that, that we researched this. And we're coming on to a very important time right now. You know, we're, we're coming up to prom time, we're coming up to party time, there's graduation. You guys are going to be graduating, I guess, around the 15th of May or, or thereabouts, right? So that's the same thing that's going to be happening in Madison. The object of this ordinance was to protect our children. Okay? I, I think it's probably one of the best things that we can do or offer this world and this country, is to protect our children from, from harm. And it's a very simple way. We did not think about Drew all during this whole process, actually, because you guys are considered adults, all right? You're considered adults, you should be knowing what you're doing up there. And we, so it's not a reflection, it's not a reflection on Drew University. This was to take care of our children in this town. Okay? Now, I see you smiling because I said, we did not think about you. What I meant by that is, we did not say, okay, this ordinance is going to really affect Drew University. University. Do you understand what I'm saying there? Okay? We did not think of it in that concept. We were thinking about the children that we represent in this town, okay? So those are just the fine points. We did lots of research, and I know that you guys are doing a great job, but this, I think, will help. I really do, so. I will stand by my conviction as far as this ordinance is concerned. We made a promise that there'd be a Good Samaritan. We never go back on our promises, and there will be a Good Samaritan amendment to it if this council passes, if this tonight.
Ostry.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you, Carmela. So my understanding, because I have a concern about this too, and I have spoken to the Drew community about this, is that across the board, for our children here in Madison as well as Drew University students, that there is the Good Samaritan law. And my understanding is that if we pass the ordinance as it's written tonight, you will introduce at the next council meeting the Good Samaritan clause that will amend this ordinance.
Right.
And that by the end of May, we will have a completed ordinance that I think our community can live with and support.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other, Bob?
At the last council meeting, Judge Troxel kind of threw me right in the middle of this one. And I guess I feel I should speak right now. What I will say is this: I am very happy and honored at the way Drew University is taking on this challenge. Your public safety officers have been doing a wonderful job of triaging your students before I get there. Your chief, Lucid, is actually starting his own first aid squad, so I know that you're going in the right direction. That's an absolute. What I've also seen is this, on the number of times I've gone up there, and, you know, some of you have seen me up there on occasion, the only individual that we've ever addressed is the person who is sick. I don't recall an incident where anybody else... I've never actually recalled even walking into a party where there's a lot of children who have been drinking or students that have been drinking. Typically, it's me walking into a dorm room, there is the RA, and the one individual who is pretty darn sick. And myself and the police officers do not look any further. We just take that person, we do the proper evaluation, and then that person is brought to the hospital to receive the appropriate care. There is no action to go after anybody else, you know, as far as alcohol is concerned. If it goes beyond alcohol, then that's a different matter altogether. I'm not even going to address that. When this ordinance was first mentioned, and it was only until Judge Troxel, I'm not going to throw him under the bus, but, you know, it's what he brought up, well, you know, this could help you address Drew. To be honest with you, I hadn't thought of Drew University, because as I mentioned, I think to Mike at one point, I consider Drew less of an issue than the town in general. Because if a student were to get drunk at Drew University, and it does happen, they're going to stay on that campus. The reality of it is, it doesn't endanger anybody else in town. You know, they get sick, you know, it's on them, so to speak. What I was more concerned about were the other house parties that go on in town, and one just occurred in my neighborhood not long ago, and a child or student, whatever you want to call it, from that party getting in his car, driving or walking home and getting hit by a car. That's where my concern is. I, at this point, have to focus on that. I think, I see this less of an issue for Drew University. I take Councilwoman Vitale, and this was also discussed with me in regards to the Good Samaritan law. I will, and I promise this, support that because it's my duty as an EMT in this town to protect the health of all the residents, and that would include anybody up at Drew University. I don't see this as being something that will change the way you currently call 911 right now. Because like I've said, in the 16 years I've been on the squad, I've not walked into a wild house party. I've not even walked into your pub on campus and taken care of a drunk student. I never have. It's always been in a dorm with an RA and a student that needs medical care, and they do receive the proper care. When the Good Samaritan piece does come in, and it will come in, I will promise you that, it will add an extra layer of protection for you, but you won't even need it, I'll tell you that right now. Your campus has its act together, as far as I'm concerned. You're doing the right things. I'm more concerned with the other parties in town that go unsupervised, where those individuals could actually cause harm to others in the town. That's what I'm focusing on right now. Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I, I'm going to be repetitive, but I feel as if I should speak as well. When this conversation began regarding what we're talking about at the moment, the major concern we were having had to do with the civil rights of people whose homes would be, in a sense, invaded, right? That's how we, some of us were looking at it, that this gave license that didn't otherwise exist. And when we had legal experts here speaking to us about it, that was one of the questions we were most concerned about and focused on. I, too, like my colleagues here, didn't think of Drew as being the focus of this effort. We were regaled with stories about high school students and younger who live in town and go to school in town and who are much too young to be drinking, getting into really serious problems. Once this issue with Drew's concern was brought to our attention, we immediately began addressing it with this Good Samaritan clause. The timing of how this gets passed, I realize, can be a bit uncomfortable. You know, do we have, do we have a couple of weeks where students here in town who potentially will drink at proms, et cetera, even though they're underage, get in trouble, and we don't have the recourse we'd like at the expense of a Drew student feeling that they can't call because of this lack of a Good Samaritan rule versus the very opposite, right? The opposite being that we would postpone to the Good Samaritan rule and we'd hope for the best. So I'm inclined to vote for it with the understanding that, one, I don't see this changing the relationship with Drew in the near term in any sense, and indeed, we would put in the legal language to ensure that case going forward. I mean, we're the council of the moment, and obviously, if we write an ordinance, it stays in effect well beyond our tenure here, and we can't speak for who replaces us. So we'd be very careful in coming up with language that would prevent the occurrence of a situation that you all are concerned about. And I want to say also, I thank you all for coming. It's, you know, we look for input from people who are affected. We don't always get it, so it's nice to have you here, and thank you.
Jeanne?
I understand that this is somewhat time-sensitive because, like Carmela said, prom season is coming up, right? And the intent for this is to address, when we're talking about prom season, we're talking about the 16, the 17-year-old, right? Not adult. So I see the advantage of passing this this evening to address that age group. I am still concerned that, well, let me back up a little. As you also know, in the case of Drew, you'll probably have another three weeks left on campus, right? So I am concerned that if we pass this this evening, in the next three weeks, potentially, the students might be afraid to call, okay? Now, if, let's say, if that's the case, right? Let's assume there might be such possibility, okay? And we certainly do not want anything tragic to happen because of this in the next three weeks, as far as Drew is concerned. So I would like to ask our attorney, is there anything, if we were to pass this this evening, I think we all think this is a great idea, and we all believe that this is the right thing to do. Now, if we were to pass this this evening, is there anything that we can do legally to give assurance that to the students in such potential situation that they need not to be afraid to call for help, knowing that we have such new ordinance in town? If we have that, then we really resolve the problem here.
From a legal perspective, I'm not aware of anything. I'm not sure if, you know, short of just issuing a statement or encouraging, you know, maybe there's some sort of statement or something that you could put out, but from a purely legal perspective, I'm not aware of anything.
But we can certainly put out some statement still to encourage the students to do the right thing, right?
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to, because I should have said, you know, I wish I thought of this sooner. I think what we were discussing, what is the greater exposure? Not having this law in place as we get into graduation season, prom season, or the call that is not made? And as this discussion went on, I heard the passion of the students. I had a flashback to last summer, having that early morning phone call. And, sorry, didn't mean to get emotional about this, but as my son lay on the ground, I'm thankful that no one hesitated to make the phone call to get him help. And I apologize, I didn't bring this sooner, but I think that is a far greater exposure. And if we're talking about delayed enforcement through edict that we won't enforce it, or getting it right, my feeling for someone that's received that phone call, I don't want anyone thinking twice. And we need to communicate. Drinking at any age excessively is dangerous, but worrying about repercussions when someone needs help is far more dangerous. And that's all I will say. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. We could do that tonight? Okay, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at these faces, and Bob's conversation probably made people start to think, you know, I'm looking at you guys, and I'm knowing from having kids of my own and having grandchildren, that I don't think any, if you came out here tonight to talk about this, which is greatly appreciated, because like Ben says, we don't always, we have to solicit and we have to look for information sometimes from residents, okay? So we do appreciate you coming out and talking to us, but that indicates to me that you guys and you girls absolutely care about what happens to each other. And I don't think that anybody would allow somebody to lay on the ground and not be taken care of medically. I would hope not. And so, you know, I just want to put that out to you. One of the other things that Ray just mentioned to us is that, you know, if we have the Good Samaritan clause, which we already have one made because we thought about it all week, this is part of the job to get this done. So there is an amendment already ready, but we can make this ordinance effective like as of May 15th. Our next meeting is May 13th, where we introduce it with the amendment, with the Good Samaritan, and it would become effective like May 15th. That's what we can do. And that's what, and that's the compromise that we're, you know...
We have an amendment that we can...
Can I clarify what I was suggesting? The ordinance as proposed, the original ordinance, not the amended version, now says it's effective upon operation of law or in accordance with law. You can actually specify in that ordinance, instead of that, a date certain. So if Drew graduates on May 15th, one example could be, you could make the effective date of this new ordinance on May 15th. So it could be adopted tonight, it goes into effect on May 15th, Drew has graduated, the students are off the campus, presumably it doesn't impact the students. Two days prior, you could introduce a refined version of the ordinance, which includes the Good Samaritan and any other revisions that over the next two to three weeks our partners at Drew come up with or suggest that may be appropriate, that we could run by Judge Troxel and our municipal prosecutors here this evening. But we can get something on the books. It'll help us with the prom season for the younger people. It won't go into effect till May 15th, so it won't impact the Drew students because this graduation, May 15th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Make an effective date to be effective the day after their graduation. They're off the campus, they're out of the community. You've got something on the books, message to the young kids. On the 13th, you can demonstrate the good faith of everybody here by introducing the revised ordinance with the Good Samaritan provisions and any other language that people want to propose.
Well, I don't know when the high school proms are, so would that take care of...
They're later. They're in June.
They're in June, okay. So that will take care of the problem, right?
Yeah, the Good Samaritan clause would be, if introduced and passed, would be in effect on May 29th.
Is that a good enough compromise?
Yeah.
What are you saying? Yeah? We're people of our words. It'll have a Good Samaritan clause in it, and we'll take care of you guys, always.
So we're just, we're amending the ordinance to reflect the effective date of...
May 18th.
May 18th.
Do they graduate on the 18th?
The 19th. The 19th, I think they...
Okay, so we have to do the...
May 19th.
Why don't we just do the 20th? You know, let's do the 20th, you know, because we'll be here on the 13th...
Right.
...to affect the complete ordinance then, okay? Do you want me to move that, to amend that the effective date is May 20th, 2013?
Yes.
Yeah, I would second that.
And that's a minor amendment?
Correct.
Further discussion?
So someone, Carmela, you're going to bring back the amendment at our next council meeting, right? That's the May 13th meeting.
13th, you'll have it. Absolutely.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
All right. I declare Ordinance 8-2013 finally adopted and ask that the clerk publish in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 9-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 195, Article 5 of the Borough Code entitled "Land Development," ordinance of the Borough of Madison to allow LED price point signs at gas stations under certain conditions.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 9-2013. Ask any resident or anyone in the audience wishing to comment, step up the lectern, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 9-2013.
I second. Council discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 9-2013 finally adopted and ask the clerk publish that ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 10-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $45,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase and installation of discent, I can't ever say this, desiccant breathing systems and oil filtration systems for transformers at the James Park substation. Thank you.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 10-2013. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move Ordinance 10-2013. I'll second.
Council discussion, roll call vote.
No.
Oh, Mrs. McCombe. Oh, she's, you're removing her, thanks, you're clarifying the record.
Yeah, you've discussed many important issues here tonight, and then...
I appreciate your, all right. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 10-2013 finally adopted and ask the clerk publish that ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 11-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000... appropriating $30,000 from the Electrical Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of a new vehicle for the electric department superintendent.
I open the hearing for ordinance 11-2013. Anyone wishing to comment, please step to lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 11-2013, I'll second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 11-2013 finally adopted and ask that the clerk publish said ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 12-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Ordinance 31-2012 of the Borough of Madison appropriating funds from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signal improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance 12-2013. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 12-2013.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Oops. I declare ordinance 12-2013 finally adopted and ask the clerk publish said ordinance in accordance with the law. And now this is the second of two opportunities to comment, and this is not restricted to things on the agenda. You may comment on anything, but keep your comments to three minutes or less, and state your name and address as usual. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Sam?
Sam Sosciello, Park Avenue, Madison. This is going to be a big year this year. You've got, the governor's going to run for reelection. And we've got five Republicans running in the primary. So tonight, I'm announcing that in November, I'm going to run as an independent council. So I'd like to take this opportunity to make my announcement. I'm going to run for council as an independent, so we have five people in November. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to hear? Maureen?
Maureen Byrne, Albright Circle. I just wanted to extend my thanks to many people that are in the room. The Taste of Madison took place, finally, in my point of view, last Monday. We had over 400 people attend. All of the restaurants in Madison that participated really went above and beyond what you could expect. I mean, you could have escargot on Monday night and wash it down with a champagne flute. And it was, it was Paris comes to Park Avenue. We haven't settled up yet as far as the accounting is concerned. Money is still coming in. But it was our best year as far as attendance was concerned, and it was also our best year as far as sponsorship was concerned. So I think I can safely say that we will be returning to the three participating organizations, Chamber of Madison, the Downtown Development Commission, and the Rotary Foundation, at least as much as they have gotten in previous years. If not, and I have my fingers crossed substantially more than we have in the past. So thank you all. Thank you for attending. Thank you, Councilwoman Jeanne, for pouring wine. She's one of our celebrity pours. And we really appreciate everyone's support of this great, great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to be heard? Don?
Don, from her 20 Redmond Drive. Really representing my mother. My mother still lets me reside at 20 Redmond Drive. Her concern is about a, when the newspaper recycled truck goes down Redmond Drive and it backs up, there's no bleeper. She was able to trust her concern to Councilwoman Tsukamoto at Taste of Madison. Just wonder if there's any policy on reverse...
Sounds like a vehicle violation to me, that, so we will, we will look into it. Thank you.
Okay. The other question is, does anybody know when the Alma Street underpass will be finished?
It was a six to eight month project, if I recall. They don't have a date. Yeah. It's moving.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Others wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Go with the introduction of ordinances.
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for first reading this evening. Have a hearing date set for May the 13th. May the 13th. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 13-2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $70,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a utility truck and accessories.
Mayor, I move ordinance 13-2013.
I'll second.
Further council discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Ordinance 14-2013.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a police department vehicle and accessories.
Mayor, I move ordinance 14-2013.
A second.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Ordinance 15-2013.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 25 of the Borough Code entitled Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Committee to specify reporting requirements to the governing body.
Mayor, I move ordinance 15-2013.
A second.
Discussion? We had the minor changes to that. Yes, Jeanne?
Wait, you just say minor changes of what?
That was the...
No, this is the...
I'm sorry.
This is not that one.
Never mind.
It's the other one.
Yep.
This is quarterly reporting.
This is the reporting, right?
Yeah. We had no changes to that. I apologize. It's getting late.
I just want to repeat what I said. You know, I support the concept of reporting for a, for greater accountability and transparency. But I think we need to work on a little bit more about who's really responsible, well, I should say, who's the primary responsible body for the reporting and responsibility of budgeting and doing the work, and also meeting the budget. So I think we need to work on this one more than, on the language than the way it appears now.
Other comments? As mentioned before, I think we got that covered. Okay, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolution?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions, R 145-2013 to R 153-2013, and then R 155-2013 to R 157-2013.
I second that.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a...
Sorry, go ahead.
We have a change, right? We have a change for Resolution 146 to include Borough Engineer.
We posted it on the board.
Okay.
My question, Mayor, is could someone please explain what they mean by a no passing zone in the vicinity of Niles Avenue? That's Resolution 147. Main Street.
You can't pass, when you're going down Main Street and you're passing Niles Avenue, you can't pass court. That's the state regulation. The state is asking.
Is there a, is it dotted line on one side now? Or...
It's double line, so I don't see how we can...
That's what I don't understand.
Well, that's, the state is asking us to do it.
The state's asking us to do this. Even though there's a double line, you would never do it anyway.
You're not supposed to.
Well, you're not supposed to. I don't know if anybody...
Would this require us to install signs? Is that...
It's a state highway.
Yeah, it's a state highway. They would have to.
They would have to. It's a state highway.
So it says recommends a revision to centerline pavement markings on Route 24, create a no passing zone. So my interpretation is it doesn't hurt us to pass this thing, because if it's already double yellow, it confirms that it should be double yellow and that they can't, shouldn't come back and put dotted lines in there.
So it's on 124?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
I was just reading 147 to make sure that we're not required to do any work.
No, it doesn't say we have to do any work.
It doesn't, isn't it? Okay, I want to make sure it's not costing us anything to do this. Dennis, yes?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
There's no unfinished business, approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $27,556.28. Health and public assistance, $855.68. Public works and engineering, $142,308.67. Community affairs, $31,939.14. Finance and borough clerk, $72,553.4. Utilities, $1,256,978.80. Total is $1,532,191.61.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers. Second that?
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
New business, I wish to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation. These are both Library Board of Trustees. Dorothy Meany of 11 Highview Terrace for the unexpired five-year term through December 31st, 2013. That was the term of Ed and Nun. And David Luber, Seven Lawrence Road, unexpired five-year term through December 31st, 2016. The unexpired term of Christine Delano.
So move.
Second that?
Is it all favor? I have a motion to... I'm sorry.
All in favor? I like, I love that enthusiasm.
I, I, sorry, I thought the appointment was done.
Sorry, I think I spoke to the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Now I have a motion to...
Thank you.